Because on average, they have about thirty-five kids at the LeBlanc. Why don't we do the salute to the flag? Why don't we do the salute to the flag? No, he's back there. Legally, it's to the flag in United States of America. Roll call.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes, here.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Seven present.
Permission to enter, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first permission to enter is related to grants that will be expiring. Ms. Desmond can provide more information if you, if the committee would like.
Any questions? Sure, Ms. Martin?
I was just curious where the air purifiers were in process. We had removed them from the last permission to enter.
We don't want it to, though.
I think that's two.
I didn't see them on either, but perhaps I missed it.
I could address that. Ms. Martin, the city's taken out a purchase order for $500,000 for that. So they've stated they're going to pick up the cost for it. So that's changed since the last meeting.
That's great. So we have a timeline on, do we have any information on delivery or where are they in the process?
We were told that the delivery would be in two to three weeks. And the city put out a letter last night to the city council where the manager noted that they were purchased by the city.
Okay.
So this is for the three contracts, right? This first one? Any questions on the first permission to enter? Roll call.
I need a first and a second.
First by Ms. Doherty, second by Ms. Martin.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Mr. Superintendent, second permission to enter.
Sure, this one relates to COVID-related equipment that's needed within our facilities. Dr. Hall?
Sure, what's in front of you, members, are various permissions to enter, which you'll notice many of the items are in our grid to assess school readiness. But we forecast with the acquisition of these supplies, which are all expected to arrive before the start of the school. The available campus seats would increase dramatically. But presently, we don't have enough supplies for the first three months of school, which is why we're recommending the purchase of these supplies.
Any questions, Ms. Doherty? Sure, I just have one question. When we get this pricing, I don't know if it goes to Superintendent or Dr. Hall, but these are obviously, are these state list vendors or are these the best? Like, how do we know we're getting the best prices for all this stuff?
The facilities department mayor will first check to see if they're on the state vendor list, which I believe more than a majority of these are. If they weren't on the state vendor list and they were under the threshold, they would get three quotes. But my understanding is that these are on the state vendor list.
I just noticed, like, with the masks, it could be a different mask, but I've seen the cases cheaper. So they're probably a different mask or they're different requirements than the ones you see.
As you can imagine, we get solicited by about ten mask companies a day. And Mr. Underwood's looked at the quality and the cost and determined this was the best one for the schools.
Okay, thank you. So motion approved by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Dillon. Roll call.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Reports of Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a few speakers.
I'm sorry, we have five, seven registered speakers. Do you want them to go first and then do the report or?
It's up to the committee. The presentation is not long here tonight and may answer some of the questions that the speakers have.
What's the wish of the body?
How long is the presentation? Ten minutes, fifteen minutes?
We tend to get into discussion, so I can't surmise the time.
We'll let the speakers go first and then we'll do that. So are you ready for a follow-up, Ms. Desmond? So name, name, address in five minutes, please. Thank you.
Hello, Tara?
Yes.
Hi, this is Robert Desmond. If you could just say your name and address, you're going to speak on item five-one. As soon as you state your name and address, you have five minutes to speak. Okay, I'm going to turn on the microphone right now.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Tara Humphrey. I'm a registered voter in Lowell. I live at eight-thirty Princeton Boulevard. I'm also an allied arts teacher at three therapeutic day schools. The LeBlanc Therapeutic High School, the Dr. Janice Hady Day School, the Laura Lee Therapeutic Day School. I'm speaking tonight to encourage the members of the school committee to reject, postpone, or amend the proposal for reopening schools as presented to you tonight based on the intention to combine the LeBlanc and the Career Academy High Schools. I was informed that the currently enrolled students at the LeBlanc will be merged with the Career Academy students and move to that location. This was presented as a done deal to our coordinator, who is also speaking tonight. The details may have been intentionally left off the slides in order to fast-track this plan without telling the whole story and without casting light on the obvious inequities, risks to physical and emotional safety, and the lack of due diligence by administration to fully analyze the adverse effects of such a major change. I have heard the term equity a great deal this summer. I was selected to join the Portrait of a Graduate team, key program that aligns with Lowell Public School's strategic plans. This team agrees that equity must include those with social, emotional, and learning disabilities. It must include the students at the LeBlanc, who are 100% special education, each with an individual IEP, which requires substantially separate environments with small group learning. By crowding these high-risk children in with Career Academy students, the school administration is neglecting their needs as individuals and putting their physical and emotional health at risk. Does this last-minute change unnecessarily expose the district to litigation regarding adherence to their IEPs? Many of these students will find such a move traumatic, adding to their already fragile conditions. I'll leave it to others to discuss the potential physical risks they would endure if combined with the behavioral students at the Career Academy. Now, consider the timing of this proposed change. Families must make an informed decision about sending their children to in-school or having them learn remotely, starting in six days. Are you still listening? Let that sink in. Six days. Our underserved and most vulnerable families will not be notified in a timely manner and will not have time to answer, have all their questions answered before making a choice. This decision feels like an afterthought, an attempt to get this through the school committee vote without proper explanation, analysis, or communication. Perhaps the new administration does not understand the difference between therapeutic and alternative schools and the great work that has been done to adapt to very specific needs of both populations. But I know that the school committee is aware of the increasing number of LeBlanc graduates in recent years and the tireless dedication of staff and administration at both schools. So I ask, why is the administration creating a new problem to solve the simple issue of relocating the wonderful Dr. Janice Hady Day School? Dr. Janice Hady worked for LPS from 1974 to 2005. She was instrumental in developing and opening the Laura Lee and the LeBlanc Therapeutic Day Schools for students with social, emotional disabilities. She pioneered differentiated instruction to meet the needs of diverse learners. Please do not let the needs of one of these programs demolish 31 years of dedication and progress towards servicing the highest need and the most diverse students in the district. I urge the school committee to request analysis before making a decision, perhaps before Friday's special meeting, including corrections to the enrollment. LeBlanc has 38 and Career Academy has 77, which is a total of 115 students, who should be given high priority for in-person learning based on your rules and this building, whose capacity is a maximum of 87, without even considering small group learning. Please ask for a list of participations, participants that were made in the decision-making to combine these two schools. This recommendation does not include input from school administration, staff, school council, families, or students representing the LeBlanc or the Career Academy. At the very least, make a separate motion to retain the LeBlanc students at their current location and seek alternate solutions for Dr. Janice Hady.
Hi, is this Matt?
Yep.
Hi, Matt, this is Robert Desmond. If you could just state your name and address, you will have five minutes to speak on the reopening school plan that you signed up for. I'm going to turn on the microphone right now, you can start. Go ahead.
Thank you. Matt Lee, 97 Moore Street. I'm a teacher at the LeBlanc School, and I'm speaking in opposition of the plan to merge the LeBlanc and Career Academy. The administration has consistently professed transparency in community decision-making. This is such a breath of fresh air that Dr. Boyd vowed to avoid unilateral decision-making. It always includes stakeholders. It's perplexing that I'm now speaking about the proposed closure of a high-functioning therapeutic school that has proven to successfully support emotionally disabled students. It's troubling that the dismantling of our school was not even mentioned. In a PowerPoint tonight, it includes three slides titled "Community Outreach." Quite the contradiction. If you think of a school as just an man-made building and the unidentified people that occupy it, you wouldn't hesitate to make this dramatic change. When you understand that schools are communities built over time, with culture created by students and staff, you realize what a tragedy it would be to destroy the LeBlanc School. The LeBlanc is a place where you know every student by name. You know how to make them laugh and how to best support them when they cry. You know the facial expression that your student makes that tells you something's wrong. It's a place of comfort for our students. We take pride in the old building on the corner of Sycamore and Wilmar. Not because it's luxurious or opulent, but because it's our school. There is much talk in the district about equity. It's a commendable concept. But equity is merely a buzzword until we empower the vulnerable. Students in our therapeutic programs are our most vulnerable. Our students are with us for four years. That brick-and-mortar building is their home. Their emotional stability is reliant on seeing the same faces every day, the same classroom. Many of them were lost when we had to close in March. To make them go to any place other than the school that they have come to associate with security and trust would be detrimental to their emotional well-being. What you'd be doing to our students is the definition of inequity. Being small in numbers is a blessing and a curse. We have autonomy to work with students who don't check the boxes of the traditional student. But in times like this, it's easy to write us off. You should send them over to the Career Academy. Done and done, you might say. The path of least resistance is to move 40 nameless faces who you only know as an ID number to a different building. Seems innocent enough? Then you hear their stories. This is the only place I feel faith. My social worker is the person I trust the most. The first time it hit me that I was working with a unique clientele was when I informed a student that there was no school the following week. "No school? Why?" he said. "Vacation, you've cut the whole week off," I said. He was devastated. The thought of being home for a week was punishing compared to the love and support he received at school. These are our students. Here are a couple relevant statistics. The LeBlanc has sent one student out of district in the last 10 years. This represents an innumerable savings for the district annually. This is made possible by small class sizes and substantially separate day schools. In S.Y. 1920 alone, the LeBlanc brought in seven students from out-of-district placements. All seven either graduated or are still enrolled. This move has been couched as a temporary arrangement. Once the pandemic ends, it all goes back to normal, we're told. If true, why are we radically changing the school sites for three schools if this is temporary? Aren't we better than shuffling around our highest-need students from building to building? I don't know the Career Academy students, nor do I prejudge them. This is also not an indictment of the work that is being done there. What I do know is approving this plan will harm the LeBlanc students irreparably. A merger will erode everything that makes the LeBlanc special. I've looked at this in every way and can't find an outcome that ends in anything but turmoil. Emotionally disabled students are impressionable and ripe for bullying when housed with behavioral students. Keeping the program separate in the same building may work in theory, but it's impossible in practice. I'll use a phrase that I promise I won't teach when instructing grammar. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. We ain't broke. In fact, we're thriving. Our staff was absolutely floored and distraught when we heard of the plans to take our school away from us. Tears were shed and disbelief filled us all. When I think about the agony of the news we received on Monday, our response was emblematic of how we always handle crisis. We leaned on each other and it brought us together. Please, don't tear us apart. School committee members and Dr. Boyd, please consider the lives that will be harmed by this decision. We don't ask for much. We never ask for much. Please let us continue to work with our students at the LeBlanc School. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's probably doing it, hope.
Greeting committee members. Thank you for hearing me. I am John Durkin at 7 East Street in Arrow. Born in Lowell and I have lived here a total of 17 years. I soon start my ninth year as the LeBlanc family. I have taught 15 years working in both alternative and therapeutic school settings. I learned that Monday we're moving the Career Academy, we're moving to the Career Academy. These are two non-traditional schools. They differ on paper as much as they do in practice. My concerns are many, but I will only speak to two. Equity in protecting LPS from the results of costly litigation. Before COVID changed everything, Dr. Boyd came to our school to visit. It was inspiring to hear his vision on a renewed commitment to diversity, equity, collaboration, excellence in franchising the voice of all stakeholders. I volunteered to join our school site council that day, in a theory and roundtable with a mindset bent towards growth, empowerment, fairness, and inclusion. Sadly, the new normal of this pandemic may have moved us back to the old days of top-down directives rather than grassroots stakeholder consensus. The decision to move the LeBlanc into the Career Academy will impact three distinct fragile populations. This presentation that you may be voting on alludes to that move in slide four. Mr. Lovato confirmed that move was happening in a call to Principal Cunio two days ago. A move that radically alters three schools should be a standalone committee agenda item, presented to you only after several months of robust discussion of all three schools. Then, and only then, when all stakeholders' concerns and irrelevant data are out in the open, can you even make an informed decision. Our students have been dealt some pretty tough blows in life. Most are low-income, all have a social, emotional disability, and many have been homeless. All too many are familiar with trauma, quite often at the hands of somebody who is duty-bound to protect them. LeBlanc kids are some of the most marginalized, vulnerable, and underrepresented kids in our city. We are evicting them from what has been proven to be a stable educational home, and there has been no due process. Right now, at this moment, none of them are aware this approval is, this is being talked about, much less being waiting your approval. Yesterday, I had a Zoom with several colleagues. We identified five juniors and seniors who are all likely dropouts if this committee greenlights this move. These kids have passed their tests. They're doing the best they've ever done in school and in life. And it's right now I feel their future dangles on my ability to connect on the telephone. Stakeholders were not consulted. I hope our school attorney's were. An IEP is not just an educational playbook for an individual student. It is a legally binding contract. I am concerned that going forward with this move may be violating the IEP placement of each student in our program. We are a separate public day school. To change placement requires a meeting and written consent from guardians. It is my understanding of sped law that moving the LeBlanc to the Career Academy is likely violating this contract and certainly violates the trust of the caretaker who signed it. I worry that the Bureau of Special Education Appeals could very well grant out-of-district private placements to students who petition. LPS could argue that LeBlanc School is housed at the Career Academy. This might not shield us from litigation, because we moved them from a school that we knew was meeting their needs to a setting that might not. Should LPS lose these cases, we have to pay tuition and transportation until they graduate. A conservative cost estimate of $100,000 per kid in, and it could get worse. If a group like Massachusetts Advocates for Children comes in to litigate for these kids, to put it in perspective, for 10 kids that we lose to out-of-district, it will cost us a million every year until those 10 kids graduate, drop out, or age out on their 22nd birthday, whichever comes first. John Durkin, Sr., my grandfather, best man I've ever known, was a very quiet and humble man. I asked him once why he doesn't talk about his beliefs. "Jackie, people know me on what I do. Words are just air." He spoke like that. As of right now, three schools are being moved has not happened. As my grandfather would say, "Just air." But we're going to act soon on something. COVID is infecting and altering our world. Please don't let it infect and alter our ideals. Equity matters more in a time of crisis, not less. We cannot let COVID become a justification or scapegoat for the actions we take. On behalf of the students, the staff, the students, and their families, I ask this committee reaffirm its commitment to equity through action. Please halt any school switches that are not thoroughly vetted by stakeholders and let us do the tough and messy work that real equity demands of us. I want to repeat one thing. Our entire staff found out Monday. None of my students, nor their families, even know we are talking about this, much less acting on anything. Please consider that fact when you decide to stay. I yield my remaining time.
Thank you. Before we continue with the speakers, everybody's talking about closing the LeBlanc. I don't see anything in this packet.
There is no item nor any recommendation coming to the committee tonight, nor was there a-
So why are we discussing closing the- So why are we discussing closing the LeBlanc when it's not even in the presentation? How did this...
I believe, Mr. Mayor, the speakers are speaking to analysis of what we do with the day school. The day school is a conversation among your utilization possibilities tonight on the... That Dr. Hall will share with you. It creates a...
Is it in the packet, though?
It is. It's about the space at the day school, and it appears here that there's an assumption that there's a vote tonight. There's not a vote, nor is there a recommendation coming tonight. I believe they're speaking to some level of analysis and assessment of what we could do with the day school. That certainly we need some additional guidance on. I would tell you, Mr. Mayor, with the point of the floor right now, I think John Durkin's comments, it would be a standalone item, and it would come with analysis, and it would come after communication. None of that has occurred, hence there is no vote tonight, so that commitment's there. I actually have not even received the final recommendation to even contemplate the recommendation coming back to the committee, so... But that's, I believe, the entirety of the background, Mr. Mayor, so you have a... It's an analysis of what we do with the day school. There have been conversations with the staff, analyzing, assessing, and I believe that's within the Special Education Department currently, correct, Ms. Desmond? The Special Education Department reports to Ms. Desmond. It would have to come to Ms. Desmond, then back to me. That's how our process works prior to coming to the committee.
All right, so do we continue with the registered speakers on something that isn't on the agenda?
They registered to speak on the school reopening update, which is on the agenda. I don't know the protocol in terms of what you would like to follow there, Mr. Mayor. But there is no vote, and I want to be clear to the audience listening, there's no vote, nor was there any intention to vote on these items. I believe they're speaking to the analysis of continued analysis that's undergone by our Facilities Department and our Special Education Department. And I believe actually what they're speaking to are including others, particularly principals, in those conversations. Yes, to be completely transparent, the day school we will share with you does not have the square footage needs to meet the needs of that population, which is a high-needs population. That's the conversation tonight.
Right, okay. All right, well, Mr. Arnie?
I think we should continue with the speakers. I think perhaps there's some kind of miscommunication. But clearly, people heard something on Monday that the school was closing. They were told, okay. So we are absolutely not ready to make a decision tonight. There's a lot of more information we need, and I would like stakeholder involvement to be more collaborative as opposed to being told something's already happened. But either way, we should listen to the speakers tonight.
All right, we'll continue, but just nothing on the agenda for them.
Sure, thank you. My name is Carolyn Cunio, 11 Ontario Drive, Hudson, Massachusetts. This will be my sixteenth year working in Lowell. I started as a special ed social worker, and for the last ten years, I've been the coordinator of the LeBlanc Therapeutic Day School. I'm speaking with you tonight after being told on Monday that the LeBlanc students and staff would be relocating to the Career Academy so that the eighty-day school could move into the LeBlanc School. Needless to say, I was dumbfounded. There was no discussion or collaboration with either the LeBlanc or the Career Academy. I am both aware and feel really bad that the eighty-school is having space issues due to the social distancing. But the disruption and displacement of two schools to accommodate one is not clinically sound... Is not a clinically sound solution, especially in the middle of a pandemic. The number of enrolled students reported for the LeBlanc is incorrect due to the absence of accounting for our incoming freshman class. The LeBlanc has enrollment of thirty-eight students. The Career Academy has an enrollment of seventy-seven students. This combination puts these two schools in non-compliance of social distancing. Adding to the issue becomes the merging of two entirely different schools with entirely different service needs and populations. There appears to be some confusion around alternative education versus a therapeutic day school. The Career Academy is an alternative school which services general ed students with significant behavioral struggles. The LeBlanc is a substantially separate therapeutic day school which services 100% special ed students with emotional disabilities that require substantial clinical support. So before its decisions are made, I think it's imperative to note who the LeBlanc was, who we are now, and what we're doing for this community. In the past, the LeBlanc has had the reputation of requiring numerous calls to the police, a number of suspensions, high dropout rates, and a need to move students into a costly out-of-district placement. Our current team has been together for nine to ten years. Having a cohesive team has been... We have been able to continue to change this reputation. We have almost eliminated police calls, restraints, and dropouts, have significantly reduced our suspensions, and have increased our attendance numbers. Graduation numbers used to be only one to two students per year. We are now averaging ten to twelve students per year, with 90% MCAS completion rate. We have encouraged our students' school pride with their participation in the improvement of the LeBlanc's physical building, and have developed future-oriented programs within the LeBlanc, and have secured jobs within the Lowell community for them. With this being said, the LeBlanc School is a safe haven for our students. A place where they can go for six hours and get their needs met, feel safe and cared for. For this reason, it feels like we are being dismantled, is what we were told. And it was told to me that this is what was going to happen. And I say this, with being dismantled, that's what it feels like. Our ETC of ten years is being switched out. A BCBA, who's been a longer than me, is now being cut to a .5, and now we are in jeopardy of losing our building. We have all heard how the Janus Day School saves the district a lot of money, and that's true, but so does the LeBlanc. In the past, the school's enrollment numbers used to be around fifteen. We have tripled these numbers and serviced between forty-five to potentially fifty students a year, saving the district a minimum of $4 million per year. In the past ten years, this team has only placed one student in an out-of-district placement. In the last four years, we have taken back thirty-eight students from out-of-district placements, saving this district a minimum of $3 million. The district can continue to provide the... Well, the LeBlanc can continue to provide the district with revenue by tuitioning in students. We have already set this precedent by taking students from Boston, Drake, and Chelmsford. This could provide much nearer revenue for our district. In closing, the LeBlanc School with its current clientele is a significant resource for Lowell. To lose it would be a huge blow to the underserved, high-risk population that my team worked so well with. It would cost the city money if we don't have it, and it would significantly increase the dropout rates. This regime is constantly talking about equity and equality, which I agree with. But where is the equity in this situation for our students? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Monica Lundberg. My address is 12 Alyssa Drive, Lowell, Massachusetts. I wanted to start tonight by thanking you for publishing the task force's recommendation documents and for the information provided in tonight's proposal. I think these are important steps forward in transparency. I would also suggest that as you move forward, future plans that are presented to parents also begin including definitions of education terms. I think a great deal of confusion can be prevented by simply remembering that, like any profession, education has a jargon that is opaque to those outside the profession. As a parent who has a background in education, I went to... I am a former teacher. I've spent a lot of time in the past week defining terms for other parents. And that's something that should be included in these documents. Now, while I appreciate the additional information, I do still have many questions about the choices being made for remote learning instruction. The first and most important of those is what is the timeline for choosing a learning management system? And who makes that decision? What criteria will be used to evaluate which program we choose? If you do not yet have the answers to these questions, how soon can we expect that you will have them? What remote learning will look like is going to influence many parents' decisions. And we only have about two weeks left to make that decision. Please don't ask us to make that decision without knowing what it's gonna look like. My next concern is over the systems themselves. And this falls basically under some criteria that I hope you will be including as you choose which of them would best fit our needs. How much control will our teachers have over their class's content? Do the content libraries that come with the learning management systems contain material that is culturally sensitive and aligned with our district's values, particularly our commitments to diversity, inclusivity, and anti-racism? Will you even have access to that information about the content when you make a choice? Is the district committed to reviewing all the content before presenting it to students? So that if there is content included in these libraries, just like if there was content in a book assigned to read in class, or a textbook, or a video? So that if there is content that would be harmful, that is discriminatory, that is homophobic, or transphobic, or racist? That that content is not presented to students? Is there a commitment to review all of this content and not assume that just because it's a learning management system, that the teachers who created it have the same lens as our teachers do, who know our students and their culture? My next question is, how often will students have opportunities for interaction with their teachers and their classmates? Will any of these interactions be live, synchronous, or will they only be through written messages? Finally, my... And this is perhaps personally my biggest concern for my family. How will the time management demands of remote learning compare to in-person learning? When I send my child to school, I do have to manage our time. I have to make sure my child gets out the door in the morning. But once I get her out the door in the morning, I can go on with my day. I don't have to keep her on task. In remote learning in the spring, that was 100% on me. Many students, due to age or neurodiversity, are not able to manage their own time. In the classroom, teachers take on that role. Teachers help students transition from one activity to the next. How much of that will be placed on parents? I ask that you consider, Dr. Boyd, and members of the committee, what it would be like to try to do your job while also managing the time of a child. Look at that sample schedule. There's a transition there, about once an hour. Would you be able to do your job, being interrupted at a minimum once an hour? All right, and then the last thing I would say about the scheduling is, I hope that you will also consider whether the lunch break is long enough for families to get to the school pickup, for the lunch pickup, and get back home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. My name's Sean Tashara, 13 Wynona Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm a parent and member of the School Site Council for the Dr. Janus Day School. I would like to start this off by giving you two definitions. Autism. Autism or autism spectrum disorder refers to a broad range of conditions characterized by challenges with social skills, repetitive behaviors, speech, and nonverbal communication. The other one is routine. A regular course, a procedure of a commonplace or reputative character. Because autism can pose such severe challenges to families, parents often are willing to try and do just about anything to help their autistic child. Taking a second mortgage, selling one's house, and even relocating are not uncommon. However, knowing our community here in Lowell, it would be safe to say not many families have that capability. I've been involved in Lowell's school district system for the past seven years. My son, who is now ten, was initially diagnosed at the age of two and was able to attend pre-K at the Bartlett here in Lowell. His then-teacher, Miss Stephanie Crawl, not only took my son under her wing, but also helped educate my wife and I on expectations of having a child on the spectrum. However, there was nothing that she could teach us than the experience we had to face when we found out our own city and the school system did not have the location or capability to provide an education place for our son after pre-K. He was forced to be sent out of district all the way to Methuen, where he was bused daily for over fifty minutes each way. From kindergarten to second grade, my son struggled with their program and staff. I had to have several meetings with both the school director there and the Lowell Special Education Department because of the issues my son was having. They could not see their way of teaching was not having a positive outcome for my son. I was not the only one come to find out either. The last straw came when an incident happened because they failed to have certain safety precautions and policies in place. An inexperienced teacher caused my son to lose his permanent front tooth and would ever be a visual reminder how awful that place was for us. It was then that we were approached and offered a place at the new Dr. Janus Day School, which we would be opening the following school year. We were very excited to hear that Lowell finally had a place for autistic kids and that they could possibly provide the support and structure they so need in their lives. However, we quickly found out the school was not actually located in Lowell. It was in Chelmsford. Yet another out-of-district placement and cost at the expense of the Lowell community and the school system. Although the place was newly renovated, it is not large enough to adequately provide the services needed for the autistic kids. The eleven teachers, thirty paraprofessionals, two BCBA's, one speech, one OT and assistant, one clerk, one custodian, and one hell of a nurse and coordinator, all cramped with fifty-five autistic kids, have done their best to provide the basic daily necessity. But yet, it is not enough. The lack of faith prevents people like Miss Krista Clark, Miss Jenna Martin, Miss Kelly Fander, Miss Christine Adams, and so many others from providing the basic life skill lessons needed, which most others take for granted. Things like making a bed, putting clothes away, washing dishes, and having a school store where the kids can learn about money are all part of the curriculum in these types of schools. of schools. For the past seven years, I've watched some of you who have been on this school committee for years talk about band trips, art trips, field trips, to all sorts of places, and even going as far as highlighting so many extracurricular activities all the general ed kids get to do, while the autistic kids don't even have an adequate place to exercise. Some individuals, like the past superintendent and the prior acting superintendent, failed to listen to the, to then-special ed director at the dire need of an actual school building that could provide even the basic essentials. And just then, two years in the new location, the kids at the A-Day School, including my son, once again were forced to move. Due to lack of space and ability to social distance, the summer program was conducted in one section of the Pine School. And now, less than a month before the new school years, our kids and staff are once again looking to not having a school to go back to, let alone a safe location which they can learn. We don't have a place we can call our school. We don't have a home for our kids who need structure. We need a routine. We need a place to adequately exercise and a place for our parents to get the required training from the school staff. We have nothing. Now more than ever during this time of crisis, our kids need to have that space. I've spoken with Dr. Boyd on a few different occasions in the past and believe his intent and vision of possibly moving and finding not only a new space for the A-Day School, but a permanent one is genuine. However, that is where you all come in as a school committee. He cannot do it alone. He needs your support and backing to make this happen in a city like ours. It is now my- Our 55 kids deserve a chance like all the other childs in our district. I'm asking the committee to work with the superintendent and special ed director, finding a location, not only temporary, but for the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, try them one more time and then we'll- All right, thank you, Ms. Desmond. Mr. Superintendent, the report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, committee members. And thank you to our speakers. I think certainly what we heard is the process that will be followed to make decisions. Hence, that item is not on the agenda. I do believe perhaps what occurred there is the attempt to get people involved in the decision-making process. That's what I like to believe, but I will look into that on behalf of the committee to understand where the lapse in that was. Because you will see some of those items come up in discussion, particularly what Mr. Tashara brought up, the fact that the A-Day School needs to be considered for another location due to what's in front of us. But as of tonight, the complex decision on how to go forward with the start of the 2021 school year remains a local decision. But the state has now required us to also adhere to a new data dashboard on COVID-19 cases in determining whether we must go with a full remote model. As of right now, Lowell's coded green, meaning cases are low within the city and reopening school is still a possibility. But we all should keep in mind that both parts of that remain fluid, both whether it remains a local decision and whether in-person learning remains a possibility in Lowell. I believe, like all of you, we were happy to see new information come forward, but yet again considerably late for what's required for us to operationalize things for our kids. I'm not quite sure who's providing recommendations at the state level. However, the governor should know that if we're going to be giving direction to school committees on how to open schools, it should come sooner than two days before you were required to submit a plan on school opening. This is the pace by which information is flowing. This is the pace by which this environment is changing. So I again appreciate the members who are, of our community who are speaking, but the decision-making process, as we know it to be a good, well-thought-out decision-making process, seems to continue to get hijacked from us during this environment. And I don't believe it's by anybody's ill intent. I don't believe that the governor or the commissioner has ill intent. They're just receiving information rapidly as well. Tonight, we will provide the school committee with another update on our school reopening process. And it's important to point out that the priorities within the plan of ensuring the safety of all students and staff, maximizing options for families, and prioritizing the needs of our most vulnerable populations will continue to drive our decisions. But while we continue to share our approach with the community through multiple virtual forums, we've had hundreds of parents and staff members and families participate in those forums. We are also having to move quickly from theory to practice, translating that conceptual framework into operations for the first day of school. With the ever-changing landscape we find ourselves in, it's important for us all to remember the deadline that we set for ourselves of getting to the level of specificity needed for a smooth start for school for teachers, students, and parents. That deadline, we continue to believe, is at least one month from the first day of school. We don't have till September 17th to make these specific decisions. The first day is on September 17th, but that means our deadline for these types of decisions is next week. So decisions need to be finalized, yet there is a lot that has changed in the environment just since our last conversation publicly last week. One, the economic shortfall resulting from the statewide shutdown remains at crisis levels. Yesterday, we were notified by the city that the level funding assumption provided by the state cannot be provided by the city, meaning we must assume a reduction in city funding is possible at this point. Funding, if you recall, is a key consideration of whether in-person learning is possible. While the COVID infection rate remains below 2%, on Monday, we learned that UMass Lowell changed its plans for returning to campus, moving to a remote start. They had just announced their plans for opening the week before us. And as good as our plans look, I heard from others that the plan at UMass Lowell was even better, that they had to move back from. And the nationwide backup in the supply chain also continues to be an area of critical monitoring. As we await Chromebooks, air purifiers, and PPE, we got our Chromebook order in early, so we still have confidence that it's going to be coming in. We were notified, I was notified, via the state, that those who had placed orders during the summer, the supply chain on Chromebooks alone is backed up to January. The committee, I know, has been monitoring that supply chain. It requires critical monitoring because many of those purchases are necessary as we move forward, again, for us to give the level of specificity that our students, our families, and our teachers deserve. While we all hoped we would be out of this pandemic entirely at this point, not only is this virus still present, so is the uncertainty surrounding many of these decision points. I continue to value our collaboration with our union partners, and we remain in negotiations, but we don't yet have an agreement with UTL, which they've been clear about and we should too also acknowledge. That agreement is necessary for us to provide the type of clarity that our staff and students need. And we don't yet have our full revenue picture beyond one month at a time, which is also necessary for us to establish the level of confidence in the stability that we can offer to our community. But I still have complete faith in our community, and I know we will get through this together. I understand the heightened stress and anxiety that is already present as a result of the pandemic and the added stress that this uncertainty creates. So we are committed to continuing to provide as much information as we can, as quickly as we can, even if we know that we may have to amend or adapt our decisions in the future. I believe this was committee member Martin's point last week, which was well-heard. This is the best decision we can make with the information we've got right now. We'll continue to move forward with the information in front of us as we move forward. Being nimble with the ability to pivot on the spur of the moment is what has been and will be required of us. With that said, I've received a few questions on areas of concern that I believe we can continue to provide clarity on for our community. So I'm going to try to ease some anxiety with some level of certainty, as minimal as it may be. First, and the committee should know, we're continuing to adhere to this committee's priority of ensuring no teacher layoffs. Despite our ongoing budget challenges, there should, there is not going to be a consideration of layoffs for teachers, no matter how hard and how bad this budget picture gets. All Lowell students will be taught by Lowell teachers next year. Second, as we discussed last week, immunocompromised staff with pre-existing conditions that put them at high risk to the devastating effects of COVID-19 will be provided with an exemption of some sort to work remotely. And I know both the district and our union partners are committed to working through those details. I'm often reminded of my mother, who taught later in life. She would be 71. She would have checked every single health condition box that would put her at high risk. She passed many years ago. If she was alive today, she would likely still be teaching. And if her superintendent made her come back to school in this environment, he would be hearing from me. And I would expect I would hear the same from others. So absent a negotiation and an agreement, we can't provide the specificity that our families need, but I think we have an obligation to ease anxiety where we can. And I think I'm, I feel like I'm on solid footing here to say that the union and us both agree to that type of certainty being needed for our community. And third, some of what we've heard here tonight with the speakers, I think it's important for us to all acknowledge. One, we don't plan to close any schools or eliminate any programs. The committee has said time and time again, we will adhere to it with any recommendation we bring forward, that any recommendation for policy is based on current time, one time, one year, based on needs, won't be adhered to as a permanent solution. But again, everything that will come back, as Mr. Durkin said, standalone item with analysis, and we will work to include our community in the process. But again, things are moving so quickly and changing so rapidly. The decision-making process is different now within a pandemic versus what it was prior to the pandemic, and we've all got to acknowledge that. So the commitment to the community is we will be transparent. We will make sure that we work in the best interest of our kids at all times. But what we're used to in terms of certainty, predictability, timeline, that has been taken from us, much like our very way of life has been taken from us during this course of time. We're all working to adapt. We're all working to adjust. And every decision, every recommendation will be in the best interest of our children with the best information that we have at this time, allowing as much time as possible to make decisions without losing sight of the timeliness of decisions to lead to certainty for the first day of school. With that, we will start, we'll take you through a few slides tonight to update you on the school opening process. And again, I want to reiterate, this is information that comes to us and we're sharing out with you as soon as we get it. I don't believe there's a committee meeting as frequently as this one to try to get this right, try to make best decisions with safety being a top priority. But I have to tell you, some of the through lines that we started to see here started this week, started to feel like the week we had in March. If you recall, the week in March when we made a decision to close schools, what were we told on that Monday? Limited impact, limited infection rates, continued to follow course with the pandemic. Schools will remain open. That came from the governor. The second thing we started to see were universities starting to close. We just saw that with UMass Lowell. The third we saw were school districts, not us, starting to close. I believe that week it was Everett that announced, that started to have us raise a question. Now we had Revere and Chelsea that had closed. So we also have to stay, as a community, attuned to learning from our most recent history to make sure we can make decisions. My commitment, and my commitment will continue to be, to make sure we can bring our children back to school when we can do it safely. I think all of us know there's no way for us to replicate what we can provide in ways of in-person instruction for our children. I think Mr. Dillon communicated it quite well, and I can't replicate what he said last week. Those, that importance of that connection, that human connection, that in-person connection. How do we teach a youngster to read? How do we meet our vulnerable population's needs? How do we do that in a remote environment? And again, I think Mr. Dillon's words last week remain now, but we also have to adjust and adapt to what we start to see with the data in front of us. We're going to share with you, and we're going to continue to provide these updates. The community should know, we are not naive, nor are we cavalier. We are making sure that we make best decisions following the strictest safety guidelines. Right now, it appears that the health data is standing firm in our favor. The governor put us, coded us green. However, some of these other data points are starting to shift on us, namely the funding data point and the staffing data point. And Dr. Hall will share with you how we're monitoring and tracking that. So do we have the, who has the clicker for tonight? Mr. Mayor, I'll proceed with the slideshow unless there are questions prior.
Yep, proceed.
All right. So these were questions that have arisen either through last week's conversation or since. And you can see last week's conversation was just a matter of days ago, and you see these questions coming up. How much space do we anticipate for in-person learning? This is something that we have to continuously monitor. Remember, our commitment, firm commitment to this community is every possible safety indicator will be adhered to for every adult and every student who comes on campus. We have set stricter safety standards, I believe, than any other community, and I have to thank the city who's come to partner on this full force, and you heard earlier, even picking up the cost of the air purifiers that this committee had labeled and identified and earmarked within its own budget. That's unusual, and I believe it's uncommon for this city, for the city to raise its hand and say, "We got that for you." They did that, and I want to thank the manager and the mayor for making that happen. What might the school day look like for students? Again, the type of specificity our families need unfortunately is not possible for us to provide absent an agreement with the union. So I want to be clear on this. This is speculative and it's an example, but I think we need to start getting this type of specificity out. So I'm going to run the risk here of sharing maybe more than I should, but I think it's necessary to do so, and I would appreciate the committee's indulgence in questions, knowing that it's just an example. What is a learning management system and how does it support remote learning? Ms. Desmond will share this out. I understand that my attempt to answer Mr. Dakota's questions and hypotheticals last time, trying to share again as much as I had with just information that had just come to me the night before, led to some concerns and some questions. I believe Ms. Desmond will be able to alleviate some of those concerns. If not, please ask additional questions. We certainly want the committee's guidance. This is a resource to support teachers that we're understanding from our union partners would be beneficial, and we're understanding from the state would be beneficial. But again, we need guidance as to whether you believe it to be right for Lowell. And how will we support families throughout this process? Extremely important. Families want an opportunity for their children, but they also want to make the right decision, and we can't give them false hope or false information. So we're going to be providing them with information, again, within an ever-changing First, Dr. Hall, this is a conversation that's come up quite often, so we want to share with you what we're doing to analyze the safety of our buildings for in-person learning. The surrounding environment, the COVID-19 environment, might be safe, but our building environments inside also need to be safe. Dr. Hall?
Sure. Members of the committee in public, as you can see, this document is, I guess, a living document and a work in progress, but in a time where, you know, everyone's frankly getting sick of the pandemic and getting stressed out about the uncertainty, we figured we could, on a weekly basis, update you on what we do have and what we project and measures that we're taking to ensure that proper social distancing takes place and we have the necessary PPE to provide safety within the schools for the number of seats that we have. Like Dr. Boyd, I'd like to echo that the city's been a great partner in reviewing the schools, visiting them, and auditing issues such as A-track systems and windows. the schools, visiting them, and auditing issues such as A-track systems and windows. We have a twice-a-week meeting with the city to prioritize issues, and there's real progress being made there. As you can see, the committee tonight had a number of votes in regards to foggers, sprayers, plastic, I would say, sheets that we can make barriers out of, masks and the like. All that will be updated and distributed out to the schools to provide a three-month supply at the schools, to provide in addition to these numbers. But on a weekly basis, with the air purifiers that we get on hand, with the stockpiles that we have in the schools, we anticipate being able to increase the campus seats available at each school. So you can see that we wanted to be conservative. On the next page, you can see that we started off about as low as we could go, and we feel that 20% to 25% for most of these schools in using classrooms that the windows open and not using interior classrooms. And with the projection of the PPE, we can safely with certainty fill 20% to 25% of the seats. So you'll see right now in our initial week, we have approximately 150 seats projected for the middle schools and 100 seats approximately projected for the elementary schools. And you can see in the notes section, some of the highlights, for example, in the Robinson, after consultation with a principal, we decided that there was no real need to use interior classrooms because with that limited projection, we knew we could flex out those classrooms to areas that had windows that opened. And as well, for those who have been in the day school, given the, not due to the ventilation of the day school, the facility itself, it's just a smaller classroom area and hallways. We don't think at this time we safely can have instruction there, so you have that note there as well. I would like to echo what Dr. Boyd said, in no form or fashion was it ever determined that the day school was moving to a particular building. We always intended to staff that and get recommendations for the committee's determination. Somehow, that information evolved, but there was always a process intended behind that. This was just intended as a note, as part of this chart, to say that we didn't think there were available seats there. So I don't have anything further unless there are further questions.
I do think though on Dr. Hall, people weren't making stuff up to come to the committee. We've got to figure out where in our communication analysis channel it got translated from analysis to people's understanding that it was going to come to the committee here tonight. I don't know where that came from, but I'll follow up with some of the speakers to try to understand that. There's a...
Sure, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So this note regarding the, that we wouldn't be using any kind of windowless classrooms. So is that, that's across the district, not just? I know it's mentioned, I think, at the Robinson, there are interior rooms, but is that true across, that's the commitment, we won't be using any interior rooms without windows?
Yes, Ms. Martin, we've put that out, but however, I had a discussion with Principal Dowling, and she identified three rooms with certainty that she didn't have to use, so that's how this note made it here. But I'm going to follow up with other principals as well, and we'll add to this each week.
So we'll have the specific rooms that won't be used, but we can guarantee families and teachers that they won't be in a room without windows?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dakota and then Ms. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that there is a large swath of rooms at the high school in the 1980 building that have no windows. I don't know which brain trust put that idea out there, but so there's an awful lot of rooms that, because that's three floors of classrooms. So that's a lot, just saying.
So, I mean, a good point, Mr. Dakota, but you can see right now we're only projecting 500 seats with certainty at the high school now, so we've, there's a lot of room to work there, so to speak, to rework that.
Good, thank you.
Ms. Clark?
Just another thing, the window conversation, it's not just that they have a window, right? It's that a window is opening because I see that's part of the evaluation. And can I just clarify, because I did get some emails that stated, "Well, I had a window in my classroom, but it only opened two inches," or really had to force it. Can you just even speak to the thoroughness that was, you know, the facilities team is using as they're going through and evaluating these windows and other spaces for use?
Yes. So you can see there is detail here in regards to the inventory that the facilities department did on the whole district on the number of windows that open and don't open. For those that want to do additional research too, last night at the city council meeting, there's a letter from the manager, staff, to the council stating that they were going to go through and fix or address whatever windows that they could, and that they were working with us not to utilize classrooms that at least one window couldn't open. I think we're going to be able to go further than that because right now we're going to have a, as you can see, 20% to 25% utilization, so we should be able to move out of classrooms, you know, that don't have several windows that don't open, not just one. Additionally, we do have those HEPA air purifiers that will be available in every classroom that's being utilized in addition to that window ventilation. So keeping at the 20% to 30% capacity with the purifiers and with the windows, I think those classrooms will be more than suitable for instruction.
Thank you. I just want to say that it's very helpful to see this building capacity. I know this is moving, the numbers are moving, but it's great to see data really filled in here. You know, we saw the sample of it last week, and it is very helpful to see, and it will be interesting to see it move as additional, you know, items come online based on fixes. So thank you very much to you and to the facilities group and the folks that are working on this, the city as well. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty, then Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, just a quick comment. I'm not sure if our viewers can see these numbers, because I know if you're watching from TV, they're very small. But I think what's really important to note is the reduction in the number of children that are going to be in the building. So let's take the STEM Academy, one of our, other than the high school, one of our largest schools. So with enrollment for 19, 20, at 845 students, that's now been reduced to 200. The high school, as was mentioned, 3,003, reduced to 500. The Daily, another big school, 690 students for the 2019, 2020 enrollment, down to 150 students. So clearly, we're looking at, and I think it's going to be a loss for many families, that it is such a small number of students. There are many families who wanted their kids to have live in-school instruction, but I think really underscoring that the focus is on safety and providing these in-school experiences for our students in a way that's safe for the students and the staff. That's a big drop in the number of people in those buildings. Thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back to the windows issue, at least having one functioning window, does that mean, does that include windows that you have to put a book in there to keep the window open, or does that not count?
I understand the question, Mr. Dakota, but I guess what I took from the city and the facilities department, they're going to address it so that it will be adjustable by the teacher and there's no danger in regards to...
Okay, thank you.
I don't know, Mayor, if I could point to two more things that the public may not be able to see on the chart. We are going to adjust the positivity rate on the chart every week. At the time of publication of this, it was 1.13 from Lowell off the Massachusetts Department of Health webpage. Additionally, we do have staffing considerations that we have to factor into how many seats we can fill, so every week I would expect that to change the forecast that we can or can't do. Right now, there's just a slash there, just a note that we have to consider this and how many seats we can fill.
And it's important to point out, that number still continues to bode well for Lowell. The important work here around the pandemic previously and continuing is what's allowed us to consider this possibility. Lowell is bright green on the governor's dashboard right now. That's a good thing.
Mr. Dillon?
Thank you. Dr. Boyd or maybe Jim Hall could answer. The current seats available, I mean, that's nothing that's set right now either, right? That's according to where we are with making sure that classrooms are safe and usable, correct? So that number is going to be fluctuating also as we go?
Yeah, it's an important point to note. What we have to do is, and what we will have to do, is say, which point are we using for which decision point? So which is, so we're going to have to set it likely now for opening of school because we only got one week. Then we will continue to monitor it, expand it, we'll set it again. You're likely looking at having to work on at least a month lag so that we can get things staffed and going forward. So as if we increase the number of seats available, you can't immediately increase the students coming in. So we'll have to determine what that lag time is. Remember, we talked about a quarterly time period during the last meeting for student and family decisions. Perhaps you want to mirror that, mimic that, but that's another policy decision point and something important to keep in mind. And it's something that I've tried, Mr. Dillon, if you don't mind, a point of privilege just in a little bit longer answer, I've tried to share this with the governor's office. We can't simply pivot the day before school. You can't do that. We've got to set decisions here to give families information, give staff information to make decisions. There seems to be some kind of larger feeling among information coming out from the governor's office that we can make a decision right now and then the day before school, you know, we can go with a different decision. That shows me that there's nobody there working that has ever operationalized or opened schools before. We've all done that in this room, and we've got to also kind of continue to go down that path as well, even though the governor's giving different information, it seems, each conversation he has.
Any other questions on this? I just have a quick question, Dr. Hall. So when you're going through the chart here, you've got campus seats available per square footage, that's with the reduction from the COVID-19? That's based on the six feet, Mayor, with the 72 square foot minimum per student. And regular enrollment, like, so if we take the Bailey, the first slide, so normally there'd be 481 kids there? Right, so we base that off how many kids they had last year, which we figured would be a good baseline for the committee to look at. All right, so we're saying that right now with even, what are we talking, the one-third? We're saying we'll put 267 kids there or won't? So last year, if you look at the, let's see, the Daily, it had 690. We're projecting right at this point, we safely can put in 150, given the stockpiles that we presently have and only one fogger and the lack of PPE, but there is PPE on the way, so we anticipate that number will move up. And we'll have a moving number each week for you, depending upon what we have at hand, what the positivity rate is, how many windows are fixed, and when the air purifiers arrive, we expect all these numbers to be able to move up. So go from the 150 up to the 370? Potentially, like, for example, one principal, you know, may have wanted his or her number to go up to 200 this week, but we wanted to be cautious and kept it at 150 until we had more supplies on hand that we could certify that. So you're right, the Daily, I'm sure, could go up to 250 or 300 safely if we got everything that we believe it will come in. So one other thing too, and whoever, maybe Mr. Superintendent, so I can see how people are getting anxious with this. So with the LeBlanc, we have no numbers. So why didn't we just put in, if we had 30 students last year, why didn't we fill in those, why did we put TBD? I believe that's explained from a few weeks ago, Mayor, where for some reason they didn't measure it due to the uniqueness of the school, but I'd have to research that. Because that's a pretty basic school, right? The LeBlanc is pretty square, just square classrooms over there, but, all right, so...
You're probably right though, Mr. Mayor, that's the kind of, that's the kind of thing that would lead to speculation for sure.
Right, right, okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
I just, as we're talking how these things change, I just want to help people understand how fast-moving these things are. One of our principals, Principal Robert, texts and says, "The Lawrence mayor, during the course of his school committee meeting," that's not too far away, "just announced they went to red on the dashboard just during the course of their school committee meeting." So I think it's just important for us to be, try to be as transparent as we can with the community that all of this is an evolving circumstance, and we're all working, not just Lowell, every community, trying to make best decisions within a rapidly evolving environment. Lawrence is not too far away. Dr. Guillory?
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Good evening all. What you, the next three slides are an attempt to communicate examples of what a schedule experience could be. And I want to be very clear by stating this now, these are not decisions, decision points that have been made, these are examples. The reason that we want to be clear about sharing out a full remote learning model is DESI has come out very clearly, and I'll read, I'll take the moment to read what DESI refers to as structured learning time. Remote learning this spring took place during school closures ordered by the governor, and districts were not required to fully meet the student learning time requirements. This will change for the fall. Districts will be required to meet the structured learning time requirements, whether they are providing instruction in person, remotely, or in a hybrid model. So regardless of the model that we're using, the expectation is that we will adhere to the minimum timelines. We've adopted a 170-day schedule, which puts us, I think, at the elementary, will put us around 850 hours or so for elementary schools, which you will see reflected in these sample schedules or mock-up schedules that are an attempt to account for what that time block could potentially be. Not saying this is what this is, when we have learning management system, all of those decisions will, and it could come out to this, but we're not saying that this is what it is at this moment, but just an attempt to be an example. So what you see on the left side of your screens are what a traditional classroom structure would be, an example of a schedule. Moving through the beginning of the day with a morning meeting, moving all the way to the end of the day with a science and social studies block through dismissal. On the right side of your screen, again, is an attempt to articulate what could be a possibility of, again, communicating structured times, to communicate to families that it's, DESI's expectation is a more robust learning experience there, and this is what this clearly communicates, because we want to be clear in distinguishing emergency closure from planned remote learning. And that's a significant difference as we're articulating here. We attempt to account for the specials, recess, lunchtime, breaks, all of those types of things. In schools, in one of the slides, you'll see mask breaks clearly required. That was something our task force recommended, again, from the DESI guidance, that students have an opportunity for a break, and that simply, I take, I go to a space distant, I'm far away, and I remove my mask if I need that. It's not saying you must remove your mask during a mask break, but that means that I have an opportunity to take my mask down. And then for our remote learners, the expectation would be, how do we then account for breaks and screen time? We certainly don't want to communicate that our kids will be sitting in front of a screen from nine to three. It's impossible to do it. So all of those pieces, the synchronous learning, so that means my live interaction with the teacher for my check-in time. So we've heard time and time again, the expectation or the requirements around accountability, assessment, check-ins, all of those pieces are an attempt to be articulated here, that there's an opportunity to meet, to communicate with your teacher. That would be the synchronous aspect of it, and then the asynchronous is I can go and work on those requirements. So we're still working through what that would look like in terms of our accountability, but DESI expects that we distinguish, we have to call it... we have to call it in our accountability system, who's actually in remote and who's in person. So all of those workings are happening behind the scenes once we make some, uh, more determinations there. Next slide. Yes, ma'am?
Before we go on to, to middle school, so just so I'm understanding, so as we're looking at kind of these two comparisons, your, your, your first morning meeting is happening in real time, in, in a classroom from eight forty-five to eight fifty-five. Is then that teacher shifting to this nine to nine-thirty to do that?
Two separate batches of teachers.
Okay, so it's different people? It's not the same person who's bouncing back and forth between, okay. Thank you.
Correct. And thank you for asking that clarifying question because I, it's one of those things, when you're so close to it, it's in your head and you don't take the second to actually communicate it out. Next slide. So again, for our middle school section, um, in sharing this out, again, a similar structure. On the left side, you have what an in-person example would be, and on the right side, you have a full, um, you have a remote example there. Um, you see the mask breaks are called out in this, uh, mock-up, uh, of a schedule. Um, and there were some concerns or questions, so middle schools don't have specials and that's what the AA, so I appreciate the caller's comment around the educational jargon. AA is Allied Arts or would be specials in, in middles, in the elementary. So there are opportunities, uh, definitely for, um, that to happen or occur in the in-person session. And then, again, the opportunities, uh, I won't take the time to explain it all, or, or repeat it each time for each session, but again, how do we provide breaks, screen time breaks, those types of things for our middle school students? And then our last slide is, uh, again, a high school example, um, where we have, again, the traditional schedule on the left side, uh, full day, that's, um, based, I think, on actually, uh, last year's schedule. Uh, it's a mock-up of this year, or could be a mock-up of this year's schedule. And then for the full remote, uh, opportunity there, again, here we have it running and we call out the actual screen break times here in this particular schedule as an example. So again, the real distinguishing feature here is that the emergency closure, remote learning is not the same as our planned structured play, uh, direction that we're moving forward. And so that's the real takeaway, uh, from these examples of what we were attempting to communicate.
There's no lunch break on the remote? Is that a miss?
For which one?
For the green?
Uh, so for this, for the high school example, uh, again, an example, not saying that it's locked in stone, but what we do is we provide them, I think, two ten-minute breaks. Um, but again, if it's, um...
No, they're gonna eat lunch, though.
I mean, oh, absolutely, but, you know, high school students at home remote, um, that could look very different, um, in, in a more organized way.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just have a question? Um, this question has come up a number of times and I, it might be still something to be determined, but, uh, you know, what does lunch look like, uh, in the in-person school environment? So just want to put that out there. I know it's on your radar already, but, um, but I know folks are very interested to hear about that, if there's any information to share tonight, and if not, I think it's just something you know will be, need to be answered, so, thank you.
Yeah, we are working to minimize any of the type of common spaces. So where possible, it'll be classroom, uh, eating. There are, obviously Lowell High School presents some additional challenges there. We're currently working through, uh, the many unique aspects of Lowell High School and its master schedule as we speak. Uh, the head of school is currently working with Dr. Guillory through what can, what we can do there, particularly given what we've started to see from other large high schools that have opened. And the stories that are starting to come out, at one high school just went to nine hundred students quarantined after just a matter of a few days. And some of that occurs because of how a high school operates, not just cafeteria, but hallways and the like. So we're working to learn from that and we'll make sure we make those, uh, proper adjustments so that kids stay safe at Lowell High School. All right, Ms. Desmond?
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Um, the next, uh, element is the learning management system and, um, based on the, one of the callers here tonight, um, I agree with the caller that, um, we should be perf- perhaps defining terms in, um, a way that's not so educationally jargoned. And I think to start off, I, a, a learning management system is typically defined as a web-based, um, software, software platform. It's not, I think a lot of people think that it is just courses that we're purchasing and using, and that's not what an LMS actually is. Um, it is an interactive online platform that typically provides a learning environment that automates, uh, the administration, organization, delivery, and reporting of educational, um, content and learners, uh, learning outcomes. And so I think that, um, w- when we talk about a learning management system here, we're looking to be able to provide schools and, um, s- families with a classroom experience that provides management resources that allow, uh, students, staff, and teachers to access learning assessments, um, information on progress, um, in, in a way that's concise and in one place. And I think to Dr. Guillory's point, in the spring, we had, we, we worked to develop something that met the needs of the time, and the time was something that was not expected. Um, but moving forward, we're not going to be able to not fully meet the learning expectations and time requirements that we have always had for our students. And so to expect staff to piece together things, to come up with that, uh, seems like an enormous task. So, you know, our, if you look at our task force reports from the first phase, there were recommendations to piece together lots of different software products that would provide us with the ability to do things like contact parents, like, uh, provide, uh, course content that maybe did not already exist. Um, use lots of different software applications for teachers to create course content. And so that's a lot to do by ourselves. Uh, and so I think a learning management system, and we have not decided on whether or not we're going to use that or not, but a learning management system would be one place that would provide all of those tools. Uh, so, um, you know, that, that's, mm, one way of sort of explaining what an LMS is for the general public. Um, the LMS also would provide teacher training and professional development for our staff to be able to, um, you know, understand fully how it works and how they can utilize it best to meet the needs of their students. So, you know, there are, there's a combination of items that are a part of the professional development experience through an LMS, and that includes webinars, consultation services, and also, um, materials that are accessible to staff and, and students, uh, that would not necessarily be something we'd have to create from scratch. Uh, also, we, the LMSs that we are looking at are LMSs that met the RFP of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which was looking for a, a platform that would be able to provide all of those things. Also, a platform that would be able to provide what our students need, uh, our students with individual education plans might need, or our students with, um, students that are classified as English learners. So all of those are components of the RFP that had to be met. So of, from that RFP, there were two organizations or two, um, LMS providers that were selected by the Department of Ed. I mentioned them last week, Edgenuity and, um, Florida, um, Virtual. And so those are the two that we're looking at more closely because they met all of that criteria from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Um, these LMSs do provide course content that is aligned to the Massachusetts State Frameworks, uh, but that course content can be altered by our teachers to be customized to what we would want to do for our learners. So when I say customized, and it's the next, the next slide, um, our teachers are able to, um, sorry, our, our teachers would be able to, um, cha- or a group of our teachers or, or who, whoever will be looking at this would be able to, um, adjust the alignment of the scope of what's being taught to meet our district curriculum maps. Also, we're able to not use some of the content or all of the content, and we are able to upload our own content. So, um, you know, I think it, we saw in the spring, it was really challenging for our teachers to be able to create a hundred percent of the content to meet the, the needs of our students and meet the Mass State Frameworks. This would be a baseline content that we could then alter and edit and customize. Um, and then also the technical support that's offered throughout the time that the product is being used. So the LMS would offer technical support to assist students with things like how to log in, how, how the functionality of the platform works, um, technical questions that might come up as a student's using it real time. They would have an opportunity to contact someone, or the family member would have an opportunity to contact someone at, at the LMS. Uh, the same would go for our s- staff. Our staff would have a technical assistance, uh, line that they could contact as well if during, um, a critical time, they, they're struggling with something that's built within the system or, or a content feature or functionality. Uh, so, so that's sort of, you know, all of the major components of the LMS, um, that, uh, the two LMSs that we're looking at currently.
Ms. Martin, did you have a question?
I do, thank you very much. Um, so I have a, a few questions on it, cause what I'm trying to kind of discern is kind of the role that the, the LMS will play in concert with the expertise and talent that we already have inherent with our, with our, uh, you know, community teachers. Um, one of the key things that had jumped out for me in the, in the task force was this, uh, concept of we have existing curriculum systems that we have in place, whether it's, I think we talked about this at the last meeting too, Eureka or NSYNC, all, all these, the writing systems that we have in place. What is going to be the interplay between what is canned in the LMS system? Cause what I'd like to avoid is that if the LMS system, if we go there for content, then what's the role of our teachers in presenting what they do already know, what we've already mapped, what we've already, content we've already created, already used in our classrooms? Are we abandoning that to use this and then trying to supplement the LMS with what we've already done? That's a, like a three-step jump to try to get to my question. Thank you.
So I think that, um, as we're looking at these LMSs, um, we're looking at, and, and I think we've talked about this, five through twelve, uh, not necessarily K through four for an LMS, um, content. Uh, I think that, you know, one example from one of the task forces, uh, there, the, for example, the science task force, for five to eight, we use FOS kits. Those we cannot use regardless of what platform we use virtually. Um, and so that task force came back with a recommendation of buying materials for kids, having to get it to the children, and then develop content so that we could guide children in science experiments. Um, that's creating, uh, a lot of, um, course material and guidance, and then also a significant investment for the district. Uh, I think the task force estimated somewhere around three hundred and forty thousand for, um, materials for students to use. So I think, you know, when you look at something like that, that's labor-intensive, it's time-intensive for our teachers, um, there, there is material that would have to be supplemented, and then above and beyond that, there is no grading system, um, there's no way of tracking, grading, uh, you know, it would all have to be sort of, we'd have to figure out what kind of platforms to put it on. And then there's, you know, how would we contact families and how would we monitor, uh, something like, uh, how long students are actually engaging with the activities? So a learning management system, the benefit of it is that, you know, teachers can go on and look to see how long a student's been working in a particular module, um, before they necessarily take an assessment. Um, so, you know, if you, you know, wanted to look and see, did a student spend thirty minutes on this activity before they took the assessment, um, to see sort of how much effort and time they're putting into it, that's something a learning management system can do. That's not something that we necessarily can replicate without purchasing some sort of software to do that. So I think there's a lot of considerations around sort of the benefits of a learning management system compared to what we would have to create and replicate ourselves.
So then the, the LMS is really content-driven. And actually, you, you mentioned something that I want to tease out too. So am I right that you're saying that, you know, the elementary, that we're looking at our three levels differently? That our elementary would not be necessarily using this LMS system, that that would be more likely to be using the, you know, our, our actual teachers and our actual content in live teaching sessions? Is that correct?
So our LMS would be using our teachers. So our teachers would not be not utilized with the LMS. Um, I think what the LMS would be able to provide is a baseline of content, much like a, you know, if you think about a textbook, right? We, we have the textbook, but then the teachers sort of dis- discern how they're gonna use that. I think that's how I would look at an LMS. Um, but I, I would say I think the unique needs of, um, elementary education and sort of, um, our content there, um, I think, you know, we'd have to look at what would make more sense. So I think it's really looking at these products as a whole and determining whether or not they m- more likely make sense to use, um, with our teacher, um, our teachers, you know, sort of uploading content to supplement what's there and, and maybe not use some of the content, um, versus, um, what our elementary curriculum looks like, cause it's very different. Elementary curriculum is very different, um, in the sense that there is a, there is a lot of, um, we have a, a large investment in, in an existing product in elementary school that we've been using, especially to teach, uh, reading. Um, and so, you know, I, I don't know that necessarily a, another content would, would be a better choice. Um, but when we think about things like, uh, science, I just use science, cause that was one of the task forces, um, that I was looking at specifically to sort of s- gauge, because I know that our FOS kits are, are heavily, heavily, um, utilizing hands-on, and we did that purposefully.
Yeah, cause it works so well.
You know, the project-based, um, when we are in person, works really well.
Exactly. So I, I mean, and obviously, we're gonna have continuing conversations around this. I, you know, my, my, I do think that we do need to differentiate across kind of our, our, the age ranges, cause I do think just developmentally, we know that students are gonna have different abilities in a general sense to interact with technology. I think your example of a textbook is, in, in some ways is kind of dead-on. I'm sure we've all had teachers who gave us a textbook, told us to read it, and then gave us a quiz. And that was not necessarily the best way to learn. I know that that doesn't happen in our Lowell High Schools today. That was obviously way back when, when I was there. But that, it is, I mean, that's the dynamic that I want to avoid. I, you know, I, I can, having taken online courses during, you know, it is very easy to go on, you read a, read an essay, answer these questions. Not education, certainly not the level of education that we want for our students. Um, so I just want to make sure that having invested so much time and effort in building our, our crosswalks and doing, I mean, I know that all that work has gone on as we've, you know, kind of brought in what we feel are the most effective curricular, um, supports and packages, that we don't lose track of that in going with some more homogenized kind of national system. Um, again, ultimately, the, the question always comes down to, there's a reason that Massachusetts outperforms almost every other state on every nationwide metric. And I would hate for us to lose that in an effort to just kind of, you know, bring down our, our level of commitment. So I appreciate the work that's gone into this. I, I think the, uh, recommendations of the task force are something we need to continue looking at and trying to, uh, make sure we implement, but it will obviously be a, a huge challenge in the very short time that we've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, then, Mr. Dakota, then?
Thank you.
Ms. Jarring?
So I have my own personal experience, you know, with the spring, uh, emergency transition, and I'll tell you, you know, it wasn't great. Uh, I know though, everyone, we just, we were managing with what we had. Um, but I learned on a progress report that my daughter, who I see sitting at the computer every day, uh, did not complete some of the coursework that was required. And, um, you know, so when I asked her about it, they're using Google Classroom, and when we looked, you know, some of the things didn't necessarily have due dates, so they didn't appear in kind of the main page where she was really looking for information. And I, I, we caught up. It's, it wasn't a big deal. Um, but I really do think, from an equity standpoint, to ensure that our students across the board in, in our grade levels are really getting similar content, similar experience, um, this is really important. And this isn't a permanent change. This is a change for this coming year, uh, that, you know, our hands are tied, we need to do something. Um, but using many different systems could be very confusing for our students, very confusing for the families that need to support our students in this experience, and a lot on our teachers, um, to create, uh, kind of at this point, without a lot of... our teachers to create kind of at this point without a lot of notice. I think this idea of this system being, you know, a baseline that provides us with some of the tools that are needed, like assessment, one of the things that I believe I want to confirm, but Ms. Desmond, you shared that this actually even has ability for parent access to also monitor and communicate with teachers directly within the system is huge for our families who are going to be needing to help and support as part of this process. But the idea, I, I would hope that no one is walking into this thinking that they're just, that it's just going to be the experience of what this, the content that's offered and nothing else. The fact that there's flexibility here, that some things can be added, taken out, moved around, things should be supplemented. Our, our educators are critical to this process and, and should be adding and they know how to engage our students. And this is a tool to help in that process while we're all figuring out how to really do this remote learning better for the coming academic year. So, and the, and yeah, just being a single platform, I think is really critical, you know, with opportunity to maybe connect to some other things is important, but, but knowing, and, and the technical support is also huge. I mean, our IT department has done, gone above and beyond as, has everyone. But it would be, I think, near impossible to figure out how to support 14,000 students and their families in this process with the small team that we have. So, this is, I guess, really just more of a, a statement, but I, but I really do think that we're making the best of a worst-case scenario, which is what we're in right now. And while I think there's a number of people, I think the definitions are important, understanding better what a learning management system is. This is an important step in moving in a direction that is going to help get us to where we need to be for this coming academic year. And I'm saying that from a parent perspective and, and from an equity perspective. We need to make sure that the students, all of our students are getting the same level and same content, which did not happen in the spring. Again, through no one's fault, that was an emergency situation, but we have to ensure that we do it better this coming year. And I do see this as a real, a tool to help do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I 100% agree with you on, on everything you just shared. I do have a question about the last sentence of the first paragraph. Grades will be determined by teachers. Are the teachers going to be able to come up with their own testing or do we use management system testings that they could have in, in style, in their program?
So, there are assessments that are part of that baseline content, but that's not, again, that is, those are there for us to utilize, but we can also upload our own assessments. What, again, to just sort of go back to the LMS, what the LMS allows is for students to take assessments or upload essays that they maybe are asked to write or upload, you know, artifacts in one system, in one place where then the teacher is notified that it's been uploaded. The teacher then has access to correct it and provide feedback within that same system. So, that's what the LMS does versus, you know, in the spring, when we were trying to sort of figure out, sort of as we went along, we were trying to create or recreate, you know, the packets that went out and automate them so that students could kind of enter the data in the packets. Or students were perhaps emailing things to teachers. We didn't have one place where they can be easily necessarily uploaded and then assessed and feedback be given in that same location. So, that's sort of the difference between having an LMS and using other things that we sort of pull together ourselves.
I have one more question. So, does this provide us with an opportunity to have the teacher know that student A has logged into the class and is there to the end of the class and hasn't like just logged in and walked away from the computer? I mean, is there a way for us to verify attendance?
So, that's a difficult question to answer, I think, because I, so, LMS, the LMSs that we are looking at have the ability for you to see how long a student was engaging in a session. Obviously, if it's a virtual session, so they have chats and virtual black, white boards and all of that, that's a little different because you're seeing the interaction. But if you wanted to look to see how long a student spent on a lesson or a module where it wasn't a virtual situation where a teacher was there engaging, you'd see the time, but you wouldn't necessarily be able to see that it was that student actually there. So, you know.
There's no checking, right?
I think it's hard to sort of answer that question. Because if it's, if it's, if it's sort of the, the, the chat, yes, you can see who's there and who's participating. But if it's some of the independent work that a student might be doing, you'd be able to see the time on it, but I wouldn't know, we wouldn't be able to guarantee that it was necessarily that student there.
Because you know they'll, they'll be trying to work out that angle on, on trying to figure out how to get, get away with stuff. Thank you.
Ms. Darney?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I think the flexibility is going to be key for this. And I like the idea of maybe grade-level remote teams of teachers like they do in the buildings, sharing ideas of, of content that we've already created or how to repackage it within a remote environment that, because so much of learning and teaching is that personal relationship with your teacher, with your classmates, even if it is in a Zoom meeting environment or, you know, so I, I think those touchpoints are going to be essential. And I guess I'm, I'm going back to what I had mentioned last week regarding the test drives and really seeing a schedule of, you know, when are, are teachers and our families going to have access? If we're looking at these two that Desi recommended, has that process already started where we've got people experiencing it firsthand and being able to say, yeah, this works or that doesn't work before we fully commit? So, have we done anything in terms of setting up the, the test drive teams or, I mean, I'm just calling that for lack of a better expression, and a timeline for doing that?
We have not done that yet, but I think we, we were talking about pulling together some groups like similar to the task force to, to take a look at those items. But we have, we do have access to them now from, from both organizations.
That, that's a key piece for me, whether we're going back to the task force, who's all, those people have already done a huge amount of work, the school-side councils, the citywide family council, where, you know, to get, I want parents and teachers and students, obviously, you know, getting that firsthand experience before we jump into this. Thanks.
Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've been really quiet tonight about the fact that the city picked up some money for us with the air purifiers, which is amazing. That's a big thing. I don't know, it hasn't come up enough, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's hope, right? Yeah. So, thank you. No, that was excellent. So, the virtual school stuff, the learning management system stuff has certainly been something where there's been a lack of details on it. That is currently in negotiation. Who is actually involved in the negotiations right now?
Yeah, so it's, it's interesting because this actually, the concept of the learning management system actually was brought to us early on from the union and our union partners. It then surfaced just the night before our last meeting as an opportunity from Desi. So, we did bring it back to the union, said this appears now to be an opportunity before us. So, it is within the conversations with the union. Our subsequent conversations, actually, I want to recognize Pina Maggio, who's one of our union partners, she actually came to me not too long ago and expressed how this could be helpful, how this works. And it seems like her, her ideas of it now, please note, she also runs our Teacher Academy. For those of you that don't know, Pina's a long time in the district. And it appeared that her understanding of it and the value that she saw it brought seemed to coincide with Robyn's in some way, but we've got a lot of work yet to do on it. But if, you know, the director of the Teacher Academy and also our chief academic officer are suggesting there's something there to explore, it sounds like it behooves us to look into it.
So, the UTL is in the room, in the negotiations, involved in making the decisions that go forward from here as far as a platform would go and any learning management systems-type decisions before presented to us, of course?
Now, we're getting tough. Dr. Hall, am I at liberty to answer that question? I don't want to be negotiating in public, Ms. Dillon.
Who's, who's negotiating these, these details that we are without right now?
Uh, there's a...
It's yourself and the union, right?
Well, the details that we need around work conditions, work, work rules, all of those things that relate to a contract, this certainly could relate to those work rules, would be with myself and the union, yes.
But that is a, you know, a direct reason why there's a lack of information right now, because those are negotiation topics, correct?
I, the union actually did ask me tonight to make sure that I not share too many details ahead of what our agreements are, so yes. And you see me hedging my bet here, Mr. Dillon.
Yeah, I'm not looking for anything that you can't say right now.
I'm trying my best.
The union has a, the union has a place at the table in these discussions. That's correct, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. I apologize if I seem like I was trying to skirt.
Nope, I, I wasn't trying to trick you either.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Howie, and then back to Ms. Clark.
Yeah. A few minutes ago, when Ms. Clark was speaking, I witnessed our summer school program. And I don't know if you can answer this for me, but I watched a 13-year-old being virtually taught. And I was blown away by this teacher. I think we underestimate what some of our teachers already know about high-tech, but they could keep my 13-year-old occupied for a whole hour and then go have a 15-minute break and come back for another hour. She was amazing. My wife told me, hey, be quiet, don't interrupt. I had to get on the mic and tell her how amazing she was because I've never seen him pay attention so much. So, sometimes even someone that's having struggles in need summer school, the virtual training worked, I witnessed it for him. But I'd like to know if we did our summer school program, I think we did have some in-person instruction? And how did that all make out? I haven't heard any complaints. So, I'd like to know if anybody could answer that. I, I thought the summer school program was awesome.
Yeah, we were actually planning at a subsequent meeting that we might be able to bring that back to you as a spotlight on excellence. It actually went so well. I can tell you the prevailing message I got when I went to visit the program was we feel safe and we're happy to be back. We had kids in person, we were one of the few districts that had kids in person. And I believe, Ms. Desmond, we had kids in person before any other district, isn't that a belief? Because we had other districts then contacting us to say, how's it going? And it, and it was going well for us with the in-person summer school program. Ms. Desmond, how many students total do we have in-person during summer school?
So, we had 76 students for our special education program. We had 40 students for our early childhood program and we had 60 students for our ELL program.
So, with that said, I'm just saying how good our staff's already doing. Professional development, I know we've already talked about that quite a bit, but I'm impressed by what I've seen even on the summer school program. So, thank you for the time, Mayor.
Ms. Clark?
Thank you. I do have a question. So, if you can speak a little bit more about the dual enrollment, courses that are not offered through learning management system and then also within the learning management system are, is there opportunity for students to work together on projects or anything? Thank you.
So, yes, in a learning management system, there is opportunity for students to work together, to work on project-based learning. So, dual enrollment is a little different. So, dual enrollment is in, it's a syllabus that we teach, but it's owned by the college that we're, do, we have an agreement with. And so, I, I know as a parent of a child who just recently was at Lowell High and completed dual enrollment classes, that typically they use the platform from the other school that they're, they're connected with, which the, the platform is a learning management system. So, I think we would have to look at that. We wouldn't be changing something that already has all of that functionality. I think we would continue to run those in the way that we're running them, if that makes sense.
And just the other piece was courses that are not part of the learning management system. So, last week I brought up the ROTC program. I know there are others, but that's the one that just comes to mind.
So, I did reach out to the different options and I have not heard back from one, but I heard back from another. And we are able to create our own custom courses. I used your example of ROTC and I was told that we, we could do that. So, I have not heard back from the other. But one said, yes, we are able to do that. I would assume if one, because the RFP that they applied for was so specific that I would as, I'm guessing that that's probably the case in the other, but I haven't gotten a confirmation yet.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I just want to, as we move forward and as we're getting some additional information, I do think it would be helpful if we could see this broken down by kind of grade range. You know, there've been a lot of comments here this evening. I think Mr. Dakota's point about, you know, having a chat feature so that, you know, you're, you're actually interacting with the, with a live teacher. I don't know what that looks like in first grade. So, from a high school perspective, absolutely. Middle school, maybe. Elementary, probably not. I think, you know, there are certain, you know, canned content that would be part of this, the, the system that I think certainly would be equal, but ultimately would never be equitable. And I think that if that's something that we're committed to, we need to ensure that there is a, a personal engagement with this material and, and for all of our students, I mean, every, every teacher in our system practices differentiated instruction. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's the, again, the, the benchmark. It's the way our, our instructors and our teachers have always, you know, been working towards and recognizes the most effective way to engage with students. I do get concerned about a homogenized approach to this. And I think mistaking it for equality is, is a problem. We need to ensure that all of our students are having an equitable educational experience with us. And that does require differentiation and individual, individual instruction, individualized instruction and the series of interventions and, and active engagement of an educator to ensure that that's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we, so, people at home like to see us when we speak, so why don't we get through the next four slides and then we can get back to, as we're discussing this, people can see our, see us as we're speaking, so. Are we onto the community outreach pot yet?
So, Mr. Mayor and school committee members, we, we do have a goal to ensure that all families have received information, clear, meaningful communication that informs their, their reopening decision. We do have two outreach periods. One is August 7th through the 27th, and that's a push to inform families of their options and the process for making the selection. And then after, after September 4th through the 17th, we'll transition to informing families of how they can prepare for the assignment that their child has received. So, to get the word out, we have begun our general online information sessions. And that's to provide families with information largely what's in the safe school reopening plan. Along with those online info sessions, we have interpretation breakout rooms upon request. We'll also have a Spanish language info session. And I believe all of those dates are on our website and we've also shared it out via email. And then we also have targeted online sessions, so sessions in multiple languages, sessions held to address specific populations. And then we have targeted in-person sessions available upon request or even small Zoom sessions for specific groups. We've had some outreach from, from programs such as the Latin Lyceum. And we are open to have... And we are open to having very tailored conversations to families who would be impacted in specific programs. So, we are continuing our mass communication. You know, we know that we will reach a specific population through the mass communication, but we're also committed to one-to-one phone calls. Here it says 15-minute calls. That's just an estimate based on the phone calls that staff are already making. Some go longer, some are really quick. But our goal is to reach at least 70% of families. You know, when we call everyone, we don't get a call back all the time. But we are targeting different groups, like our McKinney-Vento specialists targeting, you know, homeless families, our bilingual liaisons targeting families that may not speak, or speak multiple languages. So, we are, we are really wanting to make sure everyone has the information necessary to make their decision. Key dates, August 19th, that's when the application period will open. It'll close on August 27th. Once the Family Resource Center has the capacity numbers for the different buildings, that's when we'll run a lottery based on the priorities, the weighted priorities we shared with you. And then we'll notify families of their placement and prepare for the first day of school.
Again, you see kind of the importance of coming to a level of specificity, which I think Mr. Dillon was getting at. We've got to get there quickly. Families need it. We've got to get there in order to get open for school. September 17th is not our due date. It's likely next week.
Mayor?
Yep.
Just one question I have. Is something tomorrow night do you have for people in kindergarten children?
Yes, so we have one of our targeted sessions for kindergarten tomorrow morning. And then we have a session for Spanish-speaking families that evening.
So, you try to get all parents of kindergarten children on that tomorrow morning? Did you send a message out today?
We send the message. We've got a morning session, but we also have an evening session on a different date.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, do you have your hand up?
Just a quick question, because I appreciate all the many ways we're getting the information out. I mean, in various sized groups and certainly the phone calls and all that, so I think that's great. What is the mechanism as people communicate back? If they're in a 500-person Zoom call, what's the next step then for parents? Once they, if the options are explained to them, how is that, what's the next steps of the process?
Sure. So, there's the online form, right, where they can share back with us, but also through the phone calls. Once we start the targeted phone calls, we recognize that that's an opportunity for families, especially our hard-to-reach families. You know, if they have enough information at that moment and need support with an online application, we can help them with that. We can also take notes during that call for follow-ups. And so, we're going to have a database so that all of our callers can track who's been called, you know, who's got a voicemail left. You know, we don't really have a great infrastructure set up to do this, but we are doing our best to have a makeshift call center.
Yeah, and it is, it's very challenging. Because I mean, what you really want to be able to do is have these large events where people, the low-hanging fruit. People who know what they want and can make that decision quickly do it without having to go through the next, you know, the other outreach. If someone can make their choice, get it to us, then we don't need to necessarily call them if they've already, you know, kind of gone through that process. So, the more we can kind of streamline that, I can actually, you know, absolutely see the benefit of that. But we're basically re-registering every student in low public schools. I mean, so it's a huge endeavor, something that, you know, is a huge task.
And we also are creating an FAQ. It's hard to keep up with all of the questions on our Zoom sessions. And then we've also, Jeffrey's worked to stream it, Facebook Live. So, there's all these ways of getting information now. And now, as families are asking the questions back, like keeping up real time is really hard. But we are receiving the questions and working on an FAQ for the commonly asked questions.
Sure. Mr. Howie?
Last thing I'd like to say, going off what Ms. Martin just said. I worry about the Family Resource Center right now being overloaded with a lot of different work, you know, and trying to get out to all these people. I'm not sure if it's staffed properly right now. That's all I'm concerned about. So, I just figured I'd like to throw that in his ear. That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions? So, before we accept this as a report of progress, there's a few questions that we're looking, or some answers we're looking for. So, we're going to research or find out what we're going to do with the 80-day school?
Yeah, that's currently under analysis. It's got, that program has to go somewhere. We're currently analyzing that. What you will receive is you'll receive a report that likely will be joint from Dr. Hall's office in terms of facility analysis, as well as Ms. Desmond's office in terms of academics. That'll come up to me within a recommendation to you for what we do with the Addy Day.
All right. And then what's the plan when we're talking about this opening? What's the, is there a plan for if a teacher or student has to be quarantined? What happens with that?
Yeah, there is, and you may remember from our last presentation, I can resurface this for the committee for next week as well. There's very specific guidelines from Desi that works through data that'll come through the health department, depending on whether it's someone who's self-reporting exposure, to someone who's been identified as positive, to quarantining and testing everything from an individual student to a classroom to a full school. These are pretty clear guidelines from Desi that the entire state will be following. Mr. Mayor, we can bring that back, though, and surface that back for the committee for next week as well to go back through those if the committee would like.
And then the, what are they going to call them, the waiting rooms or something? We're working on that, too?
Yeah, that's in each nurse's area for a student who's expressing symptoms or any of the above, so to speak, that they have a place where they can be safely quasi-quarantined while we're awaiting removal from the school environment.
Just one question on that, if I could, I'm sorry. Just to ensure that, because I know that as we talk about our classrooms having window access and all that, that would remain the case for our nursing staff and in those situations as well, right?
Yes.
Because, again, the high school, to Mr. Dakota's point, all the nursing stuff is sandwiched right in the middle without, you know, any access to...
Those rooms actually are right on Dr. Hall's agenda, working with the city to make sure we can get those rooms set up at each school facility.
Ms. Arnie?
So, I have a question first and then I'll go through you to the superintendent. So, when we look at what we're going to be doing with our special education population, specifically at the day school, are we going to be looking at a model that, from what the speakers tonight mentioned, that has a combination of some of these populations? Is that one of the routes that you are, you know, actively pursuing?
Yeah, I think what the speakers were speaking to are different possibilities that are being analyzed that haven't been finalized. So, as I said before, the speakers weren't making stuff up. They were just way out ahead of where the decision is. So, what we have, we don't have unlimited space. And as you can see on the view, so there's going to be some creative alternatives that we've got to figure out. We do also, though, the day school is a space that we can utilize and figure out how we utilize that, that offloads other space. But we've, you know, our day school students right now are, they require a lot of square footage. They're young people with high needs, multiple adults that support one student. So, you end up with almost as many adults as students, I believe, right, Dr. Hall, with the day school population? Which then creates some, when you go to social distancing, some unique needs for where that school goes. So, the current day school can't meet their needs, but that doesn't mean they can't meet another need. And I will tell you, it's not going to feel good to anyone, but it'll feel better than us saying we can't educate you in person at all.
If I could just follow up. So, my thinking behind that is what am I going to need to be able to make a decision? So, if we're looking at, first, I would want some kind of a report that looks at what we have in terms of owned, leased, or potential spaces available. Because we have talked about other spaces that we might be able to utilize. So, if you bear with me, I've got four points and then I will be done. So, I'd like, if you're going to ask us to make a decision under a quick timeline, which I know we're going to have to, we're going to need more information. And, well, I'm going to. I'm not going to speak for my colleagues. I'd like to, something that addresses what you've done to research what our space options are. Secondly, if we're going to be, what is the word? Adapting or infiltrating, it might be too strong of a word, some of the other programs, such as the Career Academy, which is what many of the speakers tonight and people who've been emailing and calling me were concerned about. I want to know that the Career Academy is going to be able to continue as it was authorized to be, as an innovation school. We've seen great success over the last four years with the graduation rates at the Career Academy. Those are our kids graduating, and they're high-risk kids. They've had issues and, you know, things that we've been able to develop this program that's showing success. So, I want something that's going to talk about that population if we're going to be modifying or adapting that school at all. The third piece would be, whatever we do, we need to be in compliance for these special education students. They have IEPs, as one of the speakers mentioned. These are legal documents to just pull the kids out of the day school and slap them somewhere else or whatever. And I know that's not what we would be doing. But we need some kind of analysis that we'll be able to be in compliance with their IEPs. And then the last one is talking about equity. You know, we are a district, and I think from the leadership to the people in this room, we care very much about equity. So, to have some kind of analysis that looks at the impacts of these adjustments that we're making on the students, what will be the impact on those students? So, that's four pieces that I think really, I know we're tight for time, but these decisions are very important decisions. And the way we're going to get to the best solutions is to explore all these options. And again, I would encourage collaboration with our frontline people because they are the ones, day in, day out, working with the kids. And they might be able to brainstorm something. I don't know.
I think everything you just stated there is more than reasonable. And I think what was really important, I think, for everybody in our community even to hear, you heard teachers saying they're excited to get back to their school, which is what we heard from our speakers earlier, that were teachers within the district working with our high-needs population. So, Committee Member Dougherty, if we can't provide this for you, we couldn't ask you to make a decision. So, I think it's more than reasonable.
Thank you. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with my colleague, Ms. Dougherty, about all of her points. But what bothers me still is how many of our professional people had the same misinformation. That proves to me that somebody said something. And I would like to see Mr. Lovato here on Friday.
I'm going to, if you would allow me the opportunity, Mr. Dakota. I did get a message from a couple of teachers that they messaged me directly and said they'd love to talk about how they, how they came to the conclusion that they needed to speak to you first, because they obviously also didn't call me. So, I want to make sure that if you would give me the opportunity, I would like to be able to reach out, speak with them, and allow me to conduct my own little bit of analysis. If any type of coaching is needed, I think it's my responsibility to provide that before we indict anyone. I do think everybody is working under really difficult circumstances, trying to do the very best they can. And I think here, thinking best intentions, I think here might have been a circumstance of someone trying to include people within a process, knowing that a timeline was very, very tight, that he was going to be asked to provide a recommendation. I know Ms. Desmond wasn't going to take his recommendation if he hadn't talked with people. And I think sometimes that happens and it gets away from us. So, that's my assumption right now. Definitely something's there. I want to make sure I acknowledge the callers. I'll look into it if you would allow me. And I'll make sure I provide the necessary coaching if required.
Yeah, we should make it a rule that, you know, before we make a major decision like this, that there's not going to be any outside discussions from the administration. So, it seems like that's where it's getting out of hand, maybe.
It's, you're also going to have the reverse, you know, that you bring here and people are hearing stuff here at the committee meeting when they're part of the team. You know, it's, I think the tough thing here, Mr. Mayor, is that the circumstance itself. We can't be in person. We can't talk to each other. We've got a lot of stress, anxiety, getting back to Mr. Dillon's, the specificity that people deserve to have right now. They just simply don't have. So, no, among all of this, because that information hasn't gotten out to them, it leads to natural speculation that there must be something else going on. Because how could it be that we don't yet have this level of specificity? And, you know, also recognize, many of the people here, we were only here eight months before this occurred. So, that type of trust, those relationships, they hadn't been built in person. So, I think there's a lot there, Mr. Mayor, that leads to a lot of reflection. We'll reflect. We'll continue to improve, but we can't get back to pre-COVID decision-making. We just are not afforded the timeline nor the opportunity to have these types of conversations. Zoom does not take the place of me coming to your classroom and saying, how are you doing? It doesn't take the place of me holding a meeting after school with a faculty. And some of those mechanisms, those tools are not available to us in addition to some of the other conversations we were having previously about specificity and our challenges with that.
Thank you. Is there, do we need to meet Friday? What else do we need to...
There's, that's a holding place for you, hopefully, based on some of our executive session discussion, being able to be brought to a public conversation. I don't yet know. I would like to be able to keep that placeholder. There is no report, no documents. I would like to leave it there if I could, Mr. Mayor, and just ask you to reserve the placeholder. I'm optimistic, but I, you know, I'm always cautiously optimistic. I try to stay that way.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Dougherty?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Second by Mr. Dillon. Thank you.